Thank you so much for joining us here today.
Recording in progress.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us here tonight. Thank you so much for joining us here today. Um, we we called this a lovely study session because there is a request from the administration, the mayor and and the staff for a one point seven million, some say one point five. We'll meet in the middle. We'll call it one point six. Uh, basically a a one point six. I call it a deficit. We, I know we went in and we gave over a balanced budget. Believe it or not, we gave a surplus, I think of like maybe a hundred thousand dollars. Now the administration is coming back to us and saying, you know, we need another one point six million dollars. And I know that there's been a lot of uh bleeding and then it became hemorrhaging. I've had many conversations with Michelle, uh but I want to hear from the directors and and I want you guys to know that it's kind of like no different than when you're going to Target. You have two hundred dollars in your pocket and you want to buy something for two hundred and fifty dollars. You put it on your credit card. You put this two hundred dollars, which you're still fifty dollars short. My father always taught me a rule. If you don't have it, don't buy it. If you can't buy it cash, don't use it on your card. I mean, why I don't have any credit card now. Um, but really, this is, this is a very severe and very serious concern of mine. Uh, there are some questions that I do have for Michelle and I do have for Shannon. But what I would like to first hear from I was, I actually emailed the mayor and asked him to join us today. This isn't about like a bickering and pointing finger. This is, we really need to move our city forward. Our city right now is looking in in ways where everybody is looking at us and saying, what's going on in Dearborn Heights? At one point, Dearborn Heights was the place, when you moved to Dearborn Heights, it was a luxury. It was like, wow, you made it. You live in Dearborn Heights. It's not become, uh, you know, the case lately, but we are going to do whatever it takes to make it right. Uh, I'm I'm disappointed that the mayor is not here, but I know the chief of staff is here. Uh, so I would like you to start us off about why we are coming about this one point seven million dollars, why there is an overspend over here from almost every single department. Uh, and then I will listen to some of the directors as well, which I'm going to have some questions for as well. I know I spoke to some of the directors here. I believe I spoke with the police chief. I spoke with the fire chief. I spoke with Mr. Watland. I haven't been able, I spoke with Mr. Dancy a little bit, um but I wasn't able to speak with everybody. Please forgive me also. Um, but before we start, I am sorry. I know today is, uh, you know, Ash Wednesday, first day of Lent. I'm sorry that this meeting was held on Wednesday. Truly did not know. Uh, that falls on me. I I I say that I pray for everybody for these next thirty days or from now until Easter, I believe. Uh, that, you know, we we remember to self-discipline, have love, care and um and really appreciate each other. At the end of the day, we're all human. This isn't about who's right and who's wrong. It's about really respecting and showing a little bit of love and and, you know, some emotions to each other, and that's okay. This here today is one point seven million dollars. This isn't about pointing the finger at the administration. I don't want anybody to take that out. But we have to make sure that our residents understand what is taking place. And we have to make sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. We're in a very, very bad position. Nobody's publicly saying it. I'm telling you it right now. The city is in very, very bad shape. You guys are the directors who are in charge of your departments. I expect you guys to hold everybody accountable. I know sometimes things happen, but it's, we can't do that to our residents. You guys are in roles of leadership. Um, so Mariana, I'm gonna go ahead and continue with you.
Good afternoon, council chair. Um, so I just have a short statement to say with regards to a lot of these. Um, I wouldn't call them overspending per se. A lot of these are pre-approved um motions that were associated with the request to update the budget. So as we know, the budget is a living document. There are amendments that happen consistently in every community where amendments are necessary. If you see the notes under each category, it explains whether or not this was because of a pre-approved motion or not. Uh, I guess the area that is an overspenditure is the overtime, which is an issue in our community. And we knew that when we came in in last year's budget, where we were requesting for additional funding for overtime because of the lack of staffing that we have in the fire and the police department in particular. Um, and this is showing that that understaffing continued, thus the overtime increased. Um, the departments for police and fire are here and they can speak more on how their staffing is working. I know we've made tremendous um progress in hiring a fire department officers. So this is going to start showing a lower trend moving forward as this firefighters become full-time employees. So that's pretty much what I have to say. If there are specific questions to any of the categories or the motions that are presented here, I'd be happy to answer any question.
I got a quick question for you.
Yep.
The first question is, three years ago, we sat here, I listened to Chief Brogan, I listened to it, the media heard it, that he needed to hire more firefighters and that there were, when when the former HR director was here, there was, two years ago, there was a, there was five or six in the queue. What took three years for us to hire more firefighters? Because if we didn't wait three years, we would have never had this issue.
Yep.
I'm gonna tell you, I'm not blaming the fire department, blaming, and I'm not blaming the administration. Somebody got the ball. We kicked the can down the road too long.
Okay.
Which pushed us in this position now.
All right. So from the experience that I have faced in the city, uh, you're one hundred percent correct. There was understaffing in every department when we first came into the organization for multiple years. I believe the fire department hadn't been fully staffed in over twelve years, um if not more. He has the exact numbers for that. So when the administration came on board to the city and then the council as well, there was an issue in the organization where everybody was being underpaid. So all of the salaries were way below the wages that were necessary and comparable to our neighbor cities. And that was why we weren't able to hire up, right? So then we went into the contract negotiations with every single union and we created a salary allocation for a baseline to be comparable with other communities. So that was the big increase that we saw in all of our union contracts, which is what you're facing right now. It's the salary increases that we provided are reflected in what our budget is looking like nowadays. Because yes, we now have more comparable salaries for all of our employees. Yes, we are now able to hire the firefighters that we need. Um, part of the reason it took so long is because it took a while to negotiate. We would like to give everybody more salary increases, but again, we did the best that we could at the time with the budget that we have available. Um, it is starting to show the the proof that that was the right move because we are starting to hire up and we don't have as much need for the overtime in the fire department. Um, we're still struggling with DPW employees and finding uh employees that want to work in that area. I don't believe that's because of the salaries right now, but just because of the nature of the work and there being a greater need that there are employees for that particular field. Um, but again, um, we did the salary increases in order to hire up. It is showing now our process for hiring is is low. It's a slow process. Act seventy-eight takes a long time. And um luckily, we've again moved forward with it and uh we have a lot of employees now. And there's a lot of them in the line that want to come here and work for us, which is what the council requested when we were doing the negotiations. That's what we have now. Employees do want to come and work for us. So it's, it's just a change in where, how we're doing business.
While we're on contracts, and I don't want to take too much away from this, you're such a good this body. Um, you're right. We're starting to feel the wrath of of these of of these contracts. Did we do like a cost analysis to see if the city can afford this? Or because you're saying we're, we're seeing, we're seeing this deficit of one point seven million dollars because of that one up. First year in office, before we gave those, we were a stolen deficit of one point nine, and we saw one of two point two. Now we saw, then we tried to get another one for, you know, one, almost two point seven, then one point nine. Now we're seeing one point seven. So the trend, regardless, we've always seen a trend of having a deficit in the budget somewhere. I don't believe it all sits there. And I think the overtime was the same thing as it was last year. If anything, we took seventy-five thousand and fifty thousand dollars away. Like, there wasn't anything dramatic that was removed out of the police and, you know, I know everybody liked to say at one point the council was defending the police. It's not true. All we said was follow.
I can show you what we presented on April first versus what was approved at the end of.
Yeah, you, 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 you guys, you guys gave us something that wasn't realistic. You didn't have the money for it.
Again, it wasn't realistic, but it was consistent with the trend, and this continues to be consistent with that trend.
So obviously, then the trend has nothing to do with hiring and firing because the three years ago, we were still fully staffed, we still had a deficit. But I can't say that was because of the shortage. It's the overspending. We say with Mr. Saputo, I don't want to make this a debate. But we say here with Mr. Saputo, we say here with Michelle, we say here with almost every Tom Schroeder, they've always said we're overspending, we're overspending. I don't like, I don't, I don't, I can't say it's the police and fires fault. But while we're talking about contracts, I've had a conversation with some police officers. And some of them tell me we have a tentative agreement to get a five percent increase over the next three years, every year of five percent, five percent, five percent. Can the city afford that? If you're telling me right now what we have, we can't. And why would the city put, why would the city go into a negotiation and find a tentative agreement, which hasn't been brought to the council yet? Which I don't know, this could be, you know, he said, she said. But I read some, some documents saying that the administration is saying we can afford a fifteen percent increase for the patrol officers. Um, but you're telling me right now, like, where are we getting the money from?
I was not involved in the negotiations. Um, so I know that the controller is currently looking into those numbers. It's the first time that she's looking at them. So.
I talked to her about it, I think, like a week ago. So I know I've been waiting on those numbers.
Council chair?
Hang on one second, council. I I just want to make sure, like, this is without a five percent increase for the next three years. Without a fifty percent increase over three years. We we really have to make sure that we're, we're doing our numbers the right way. We can't just say we're gonna give everybody what they want, and then when it comes time to paying everything, the city is looking around. And I'm, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not putting the pressure on you, but this is reality. All of us need to come together to figure out a solution.
I agree.
You know, the solution isn't to say, well, well, we'll pray that grants come in and grants don't end up coming in.
No.
Go ahead, councilman.
So a couple of questions. One is, again, back to the con- police contract. Like, again, we don't do any analysis or studies before we enter into a contract or agreement.
That she wasn't in.
I know, I know, but no, I'm asking. Isn't there studies done? I mean, do we just go in there and just say, hey, we're gonna give you a raise because we can say we can give you a raise?
It depends on what is being negotiated from what I am aware of, right? Sometimes there are studies, sometimes there are not. Typically, the controller's department is always involved in that, and they do calculations internally um to see those numbers. This wasn't the case because Shannon wasn't here. So.
Well, why wasn't Plamoran involved?
I don't believe Plamoran has ever been brought up for negotiations with the unions.
I know, but you like, look at the numbers. Do we not say, hey, this is what, because you know, it's a state law that says you cannot negotiate with the union without giving them something you can afford. So if you're negotiating with something that you cannot afford, and you're just saying, well, go ahead, because you know what ends up happening is, well, the council, you guys approved it.
I refer that question to the police department and the individuals that were there when that was negotiated. And I know that they're going to ready to present that to council, so perhaps this is a conversation that we can have when that does come to council. Um, at this moment, that's not one of the agenda items.
It's going to be, going to eventually have to become, and we're talking about the money right now.
Yes, it's it's going to be when they present the tentative agreement to you, and it's also going to come up when we present the budget next month. So I'm just saying, I don't have the answers right now. Perhaps we can wait until that time and the controller and everybody else is ready to answer questions with regards to this new agreement.
Okay. All right, then I have a couple of questions for Michelle and and if, uh, Shannon, you can come up. You can, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Right.
Are you, can I ask these questions?
No, go ahead. I'll, I'll talk after.
Okay. Can you unmute, Michelle? Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
How you doing? How you doing, Michelle?
I am well.
Awesome. Michelle, were you able to take a look at that contract? I know it was emailed to you and I will see it on there with you.
Yes, I did. I looked at it. The way it was worded, it was difficult to figure out the exact dollar amount. So Shannon is helping to go through those numbers to get an exact dollar figure to see what it's gonna cost the city.
Let's, let's stay on top of that for me, please. Thank you. Thank you. Would you check on we're talking about them? There's about a contract that was emailed to them. Shannon, can you tell me, um, when we, or Michelle, if you're on here too, you or Shannon, how much money did we say we were gonna bring in at, uh, revenue? Did we assume? Because, you know, everything is trending. We were gonna bring in X amount. And when we passed the budget, sixty million, we assumed revenue was gonna come in at an X number. Can you give me that X number? Not what we have, what actually came in, but what we anticipated that was gonna come in.
I can look it up.
You want me, I can tell you it.
Oh, sure.
Fifty-four million, five hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six. You know what we ended up coming in? Forty-nine million, five hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three. We're five million dollars short of what we anticipated to come in when we passed that budget. And everybody keeps asking, where did this five million dollars, how do, you know, how was this five million dollars from the fund balance come out of? It's because we underestimated. We overpromised and underdelivered. Now we're also one point seven million dollars coming before us and asking us for this money. Guys, that's that's seven million dollars from the fund balance that we're asking to use. This isn't just about, you know, a one point six, we, one point seven million dollars that we're saying. Nobody's talking about the fact that only forty-nine million dollars came in when we anticipated fifty-four million was gonna come in. For that article that came out against, against the city, that we said it was sixteen thousand dollars because we made a mistake. No, they were talking about this. This is what they were talking about. You tell me if these numbers are correct?
That was before I was here. I'm not familiar with that budget or.
Michelle, can you tell me if this is correct?
So the, your numbers, yes, they are correct. Um, if you're looking at the budget to actual statement. Um, the article that you're referencing, the state did contact the city because of the small deficit in the MIDC fund. The article was also elaborating on some other things, but that wasn't the main issue, if that makes sense. But yes, the revenues were underest, the rever- revenues did come in under the budgeted amounts.
I I just want you to know, if you go on the state website, we have a notice of intent to withhold state payments. We have a re- request to, uh, improve of delinquencies. We have another denial thing from the state. We have retiree, retirees system of annual report notice of delinquency. What is going on? Like, there's a lot of, and these are from like February fourth of twenty twenty-five. There's a lot of information.
They, they've all been submitted, the corrective action plan and the.
The council should know this. We, like, people, people need to know what's happening in the city, what's, what's going on with our finances. I know, you know, me and Michelle and Brian had a conversation, but these numbers were never given to us. This is to our own digging, our own research. This, this, these are pretty alarming, Michelle.
I'm Shannon.
I'm, I'm sorry. Shannon and Michelle.
It, it's okay. She can be me.
Awesome. You guys are one.
Absolutely. We're on the same page. I do want to say, though, those notices that you're referring to, those are common when you get an extension and they all have been addressed. So.
Okay. And and that's good to know. What about the fifty-four million dollars that we anticipated? Well, forty-nine million only came in.
So.
Did we take that from the balance?
Yep. So, yes, yes, we did.
Did that, did that come before council to get approved? Like, who? Like, did anybody tell us that this was happening? That five million dollars was being spent, and nobody thought to say, let me call the, the fiduciaries to the city, the seven council members and say, hey, guys, we underbudgeted, you know? we underbudgeted, you know, we we thought we were gonna get fifty four million dollars. And I and really, I commend Councilman Saba on some of these things. He was early on, it was like, remove this, remove this, remove that. If you don't have the money, don't don't say we're gonna have it. But what happened was, we approved the budget with the fifty four million. And so you didn't feel like you needed to come before us and say, hey, we're gonna take this out of the fund balance because they already approved it. That's that's not being transparent.
Sorry, I'm a little confused about which budget you're talking about, but I just wanted to point out that a lot of the information with regards to the audit findings are supposed to be presented to council. We're waiting on a date to have the auditors come and present it to the council members.
I think I I think that some of the information is here. Our five million dollars used from fund balance, which wasn't approved by the council. That never came before us, Mariana.
So if you're referring to last year's budget, the budget amendments did come to council, council didn't approve them. So it it did come.
No.
Yes.
Can you can you look that up for us, Madam, please? Thank you. I I mean, I could tell you if if a five million dollar amendment came in, we would have known.
I don't remember any. I don't remember. The only thing I remember coming for.
So when we say we're asking for one point seven million dollars, or one point five or one point six to the directors, this isn't like this isn't us saying no to one point seven million dollars or no to overtime. This is us saying no to seven million dollars. That's the real number. Real number is five plus one point seven. Six point seven. We have a job here to, we promised to be fiscally responsible. Like, it's on you guys to hold those director in those positions accountable, and it's unfair. But the tough decision doesn't come before, it's not the council's fault. Tough decision needs to be done by the mayor and the administration. You guys have to make those tough decisions. We do need overtime for police and fire. We do need overtime for D P W. I I I agree. Because the second you know, a water main break's gonna give, if 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 a if a D P W department can't have somebody there with overtime, and you have a water main break, you're gonna have to wait till the next morning at seven A M. because they all clock out at three thirty. Because we have no room for overtime? It's not an answer. But I just want us to, when we when we're saying a number, let's be, let's give an honest number. Michelle, can you give me, aside from the one point seven million, what is the actual number that's coming before us? Because it's not one point seven. My calculation tells me we're short five million plus the one point seven.
Um, so Shannon has the the number that's coming from fund balance, but I'm not sure what you mean about short five million for this fiscal year.
I'm talking from twenty twenty four, not twenty twenty five. We're talking from June, we're talking from June thirtieth, when it starts, twenty twenty four, the current right now. There's been five million dollars used. And plus now we're asking for an additional one point seven.
Plus, the budget is not even done yet. We still have about four or five months to go.
That's what that one point seven is, what we've already used from the fund balance.
What I wanna know is just for overtime.
I just wanna know from June thirtieth, when we close our budget to March fifth of twenty twenty five, how much money have we used from fund balance so far?
So just to clarify, the five million was last year. Year ending June thirty twenty four. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I get it. But I wanna know, from June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, from March to present day, how much money have we used without approval of the council from the fund balance?
So that would be the budget amendment amount that Shannon's proposing. That is what we expect to use through the end of the fiscal year.
I I I get that, to the end of the fiscal year.
Yep.
I wanna know what we used. Again, hold on, Mariana, one second. I I know what you're gonna say. You're gonna say, well, it's only the one point seven. I I get it. When we, okay, when we ended twenty twenty three fiscal year, how much money was in the fund balance? Was it sixteen million?
Seventeen million, eight twenty five.
How much money do we have in the fund balance today, currently, right now?
Twelve million, eight ten.
Yeah. Where did that, how did that happen?
Are you asking me?
Anybody, anybody can answer that. Because we didn't use that when we approved the number. We 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 approved a balanced budget. That's what we did. We went through, the media was here, Channel Four, Channel Seven, Channel Two, CBS News Detroit, everybody was here. I believe we sat here with Mariana, everybody, we we approved for for three, four hours to say, here is a balanced budget. Follow up. How did we use five million, and now we're asking for one point seven? That's the question that I'm asking. I'm not blaming anybody. I just, I think the council just deserves to know.
Again, I still don't know where your five million is coming from, because that's for last fiscal year, correct?
No.
That's for the current fiscal year?
Right.
June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, the fiscal year ending, so last, because that's fiscal year.
Right.
Yes.
Seventeen.
But we're still in the, we're still in, when we approved, the last budget we approved was the twenty twenty four, guys. Shannon, you were not here.
No, you approved twenty twenty five.
Twenty four, twenty five, basically saying our budget was supposed to be fifty four million. But we have forty nine million coming in.
Our revenue turned out to be short.
Yep.
So you guys used to fill it, to 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 make up the losses, we used.
Fund balance.
Our fund balance. But that never came before us. Ever.
Last year?
No, this year, twenty four, twenty five.
But I'm assuming that those did come to you through, like, motions, like, obviously, make purchases. It it wasn't a single five million dollar purchase.
No, but if we know we came in short, why are we saying, I mean.
But it would say, the motion would say it's coming out of fund balance.
Uh, no.
It would say the account.
Good, but it doesn't. That's what that's what most of these I hear are. You guys had already made, you guys had, sorry, I'm under the weather, my voice is.
I already heard that.
Um, but so you guys had approved purchases. Whether or not you knew the amount, the money was coming from fund balance or not, I don't know. It wasn't indicated in the request, which is why we're coming back to you a second time. I I I agree.
It's a straight off highway robbery.
It should be, I have made that suggestion multiple times. I'll make it again here. If if the money is coming from fund balance and you need an amendment, that should be part of the request for the purchase. But since that didn't happen, you guys had already made these, you guys had already approved.
No, we didn't make anything.
You guys approved the purchases.
We we were, we were baited, is the word I'm gonna use. We were baited to do it.
I.
We're not gonna keep saying, see, like, and I I know you're not doing that. So many times, they say, oh, you guys approved it, you guys approved it. No, we were baited.
Councilor.
That's that's what happened.
I I have questions. Be do me a favor, though, because this meeting is gonna go on, but I I want every motion that we approved that came out of fund balance, I wanna brought to us and put on the next agenda on the next meeting.
Yeah, I don't know if that's gonna be.
It's it's.
That that quick, Councilor, but maybe with the.
You asked the clerk for all motions, or?
Yeah, but no, but I wanna know which ones the money came out of fund balance.
I mean, you can give us a script, you know, to receive, know and file, but I don't even know how the clerk would be able to do that.
Right, they 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 wouldn't, because that's why we're back here right now, to make the amendments.
Well, we never made an amendment for when we asked for one point seven million. Why don't you guys just continue to just use the fund balance, and it's not even coming to us, like you guys been doing for the last year?
I I'm I'm just the, I'm I'm the accountant for the city.
I know, I know.
This should be invested in.
I I can't speak for the directors.
Well, I'll I'll be honest with you, knowing that, none of these, uh, none of these amendments have my support.
I mean, guys, it's not that it doesn't have the support. How much money do we have in our fund balance currently?
Um, and so the audit hasn't been presented to you yet, but the fund balance is.
Can you speak into it a little bit?
Yes, like I said, the audit hasn't been presented to you guys yet, but the fund balance, the unrestricted general fund, fund balance is four point three million.
Four point three, we're asking for one point seven. We got no money. We just had seventeen million pending twenty twenty three. And now you're asking for one point seven. You want me to throw a bigger curve ball at everybody in here? Wayne County wants their money.
That's coming from the water fund, so that that doesn't.
We're gonna increase water prices on more residents?
That was already allocated in every single one of our audits for the past, I don't even know how many years this has been going on for.
How much, how much, how much did we, are you guys giving them?
It's not we're giving them. We're in a contract with them. The prior administration had made negotiations to get out of that contract and take over the operations of one of the C S Os that's in our community. Um, this was done by Mayor Paletko back in the day. The agreement was to not pay operation and maintenance for those products for the period of time until we found an operator for that facility. Um, in the end, no operator could take the the job. So we are in negotiations with them right now to go back to the original contract and pay them what is owed to them, which has been put put on our restricted fund every single year by Michelle and our auditors, so.
Michelle, can you tell how much money is in that restricted fund for Wayne County?
It's about two point eight, right now.
It's it's two point eight million dollars.
Well, they want three point nine from us, so we gotta figure out another million.
Well, we're we're questioning that number right now. They just gave us all the invoices because that is what we're questioning, like, it's, it doesn't match with what our numbers are.
Okay, you know what we should have did, though, if we've known that they were doing this? We should have taken the restricted ARPA funds that they gave us, the twenty four million, just said, take take your money out, give us what we have, so we know what we actually have. That would have been, that would have been, you know, a smart solution.
So again, like.
It's here nor there.
Just so that you know, this is an old debt, it's almost thirty years, so it's always been accounted for in our water rate already. Yes, it's it's an old, I mean, I don't know, thirty years, but many, many years. It's a C S O contract, it's a C S O debt that we've been paying for multiple years. I think one of them expires in thirty thirty and the other one in thirty thirty five. So these aren't new things, and this we're already budgeted for and accounted for in our water rates. So it has nothing to do with ARPA. It's not a new expense. It's it's just an ongoing.
I'm just saying, we we could have, we could have done, I just tell them, I'm I'm just giving an example, what I would have done, or we should have just been done saying, hey, the sub money is coming to us great, hold off on on the three million. And I even had that conversation with Wayne County. I said, why don't you guys just do that? I said, we didn't think of that.
So again, the issue has never been whether or not we have the money. We have the money, and we didn't need to use ARPA money for it. We didn't hold the money because of not having it. We held the payments because of the agreement that the prior mayor had about us taking over the operations. So let's not confuse that we've always had the money. The reason it wasn't getting paid, it was because we were gonna take over the facility.
Well, right now, the more alarming thing here, Mariana, is we have seventeen million dollars in our fund balance, and we have three million dollars. Now you're asking for one point seven, leaving the state with the fund balance of a million dollars. Do you think that, and yourself as the chief of staff, that is the right decision for the city?
The right decision for the city to allocate one point seven million dollars? I think that there are contracts that have been approved there, and I would suggest that you look at the motions that had already been preapproved and the work that has already been done with some of this budget to actual, I mean, budget amendments. Um, now, with regards to the things that are forecasted for expenditures, that is up to you to recommend not spending that. And for the administration to figure out how to do that, we do have contractual agreements that are restrictive for us. So it's it's a much deeper conversation to have. We are all here. I encourage you to ask questions and perhaps go department by department so that you can understand why this came to be and which ones you would be in support of or not. But at least give an opportunity for the directors to speak on why these issues are coming up.
Can I interrupt for one second, if you don't mind? Okay, sorry. Um, I just wanna clarify, the four point three million of fund balance, that's unrestricted. The twelve million that I spoke of just a few moments ago, that's your total fund balance. So that includes the restricted for your pension and your sanitation and other restrictions. Yeah, I just wanna make sure that you know that, and it didn't go from twelve to four.
Okay, then can you tell me, and can you tell me in twenty twenty three, please, Michelle?
Yes.
And and actually, I would like it sent to us as well, if that's okay. You don't mind sending it to all the council members so that they have it. I'd like to know what a what a unrestricted amount of fund balance was in twenty two and twenty three, twenty four and then twenty five. Can you give me those numbers every year, but the unrestricted? How much they were, so that we know where we are today?
Yep, so unrestricted, I know right now, in twenty twenty three, it was nine point five. Uh, at the end of twenty. Yes. At the end of twenty twenty four, it was four point three. And we don't do the calculations for the unrestricted until the end of the fiscal year.
We don't even know, we can give this one point seven then.
Well, the unrestricted will be that that amount that they're requesting will come from the unrestricted.
I understand that, but we don't, we we don't have the calculation. We don't know how much we've already spent. We've already spent four million this year, five million this year, because.
Didn't spend anything this year.
No, no, guys, guys, we did. We we approved the budget. I have it right here. We approved the budget, fifty four million, revenue was supposed to come in at fifty four. Of, that's what I mean. I know we haven't spent any of twenty twenty five. I'm talking fiscal year twenty four, twenty five.
That's this year.
This year. We came in at fifty four million.
No, that is last year. That's twenty three.
Current budget.
The current.
That's last year's budget. So I I think that it's it's also a little bit hard to know how much we have come in, because I don't know if we've received all the revenues yet.
We're at forty, we're at forty nine million, but we're getting about five million right now.
If we calculated today, the unrestricted versus your your revenues versus expenditures, you're front loaded with your property taxes. Your state shared revenue doesn't come in until towards, you know, it's every two months. So we can't predict with certainty right now, because we'd actually be overstating what your fund balance is.
I don't I don't want us to, I don't want us to make any predictions. Clearly, we 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 failed when we made these predictions. We did, Michelle. You agree to that?
I think that you estimated your budget to be higher last year than it came in, yes.
That's okay, guys. Like, listen, we're not, we're not gonna point our fingers. A mistake happened. That's okay. Like, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, we we shouldn't be angry and yelling and screaming it with each other. We're just saying, a mistake happened. We have to all come together to figure out how to fix it. We can't just say, well, hey, approve this one point seven million dollars. That's not the solution. That's all I'm saying. And I'm trying to show a little bit of humility here. The truth is, proving one point seven million dollars on my end is gonna be a very, 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 very hard thing to 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 change my mind on. It's gonna be very hard for me to tell you, yes.
And as Shannon did mention, and I know she'll get the details for you, um, these items, they will still be charged. It just won't, it'll show up that you're over budget. Because you approved the payment, purchase and payment of these contracts. Um, now, the overtime, that's a whole other story, but just so you know, they they've been approved already, the spending will occur. You just won't, you'll show us over budget.
So so like, we came and controlled it, you're telling me?
Well, you've already approved. Yes.
So then we, you you know what? But this is a living document. Can't we come back and say, we're gonna unapprove these? Because the reality is, Michelle.
And whatever expenditure that we haven't used or we haven't committed to, we should bring them forward and just remove them. Because if they came out of fund balance, it's it literally was baited, because where where's Mr. Is Mr. Debe here today? One of any of the joint projects that we have going with the city, any of that money is from out of fund balance.
I'm sorry, which projects are you referring?
The joint, water, sewage.
So again, I wanna I wanna remind everybody, the water fund is separate from the general fund.
Any contracts that we entered into the city that we said that we gotta pay forward, so where did that money come from? If it was that from fund balance also?
Yes.
Again, which contracts are you referring to specifically?
I'm saying.
Because most of Ali Debe's contracts are either water or highway, which have their own funding sources. And that's where that money comes from typically.
Councilor, thank you. So just to be clear, is there a way, Madam Clerk, to find exactly all the amendment that you're talking about, that they come from the fund balance or they come from somewhere else?
So I think that the the best answer that we have for you is, it's here in the budget amendments. We are asking you here in the budget amendments to look at what we have. Some of them are coming from fund balance. Some of them are being moved from from one area to another. So this is what's coming from fund balance. I would recommend that you go one by one. And again, if there are things that haven't been paid yet and you wanna remove them, you can rescind those motions. That's absolutely okay. But again, just take a moment to go item by item to understand what's happening. And um, and perhaps make a decision based on that, not with such a large number as one point seven, but do it department by department and figure out what's.
About one point seven, we're talking about the other stuff that we had. You said you approved, we approved since June till now.
That's included in that one point seven. So not everything in the one point seven has been spent yet. This is our forecast of what we assume is going to be necessary for expended.
No, no, I I understand, I understand.
Also in the budget, the fund balance.
Correct.
Okay, so where did that money go?
Where did that? Where did that money go or where did the bill or where did the expenditures come from to get paid?
That's what I'm saying. I need to see exactly what we approved that came from the fund balance.
The, these purchases were presented to you guys for approval. You guys approved them. Some, some that you approved didn't require an amendment, some of them do require an amendment.
No, no, I understand.
Require an amendment are what is listed here.
So some of the, most of the stuff then just came from the fund balance with no amendment?
So I have a couple corrections I'll tell you about, but the actual amount coming from fund balance is one point four million. Seven hundred of that is overtime and about five hundred of that is related to items that you guys have already approved.
So where did the rest of the money go that was in fund balance?
It, it didn't go anywhere. I don't
Was Michelle lying about the numbers she's given us?
I think he's referring to the change from the fund balance in twenty twenty three to the fund balance in the twenty twenty four fiscal year. Is that correct? So the nine million to the four million?
Correct.
That was payouts for the union contracts. Because remember you have back pay for police and fire, which we negotiated. So all of those payments that got approved with the union contracts, a big portion of that was back pay. Because unlike TPOA and those unions do get a year's worth of retro pay or so.
That makes more sense now. Can we get like exact numbers for all this stuff? Can we exact, get exact numbers where like, where
What the retro pays were?
Yeah, like each to prom, how much do they get?
Yeah, we, we
Like divide the five, like dissect the five million and see exactly where it went.
I don't know if we can pull that from
If not now, if you can submit to us.
But yeah, the biggest chunk is union contract negotiation.
I, I still wanna see it.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. But I, I just, now I'm understanding what you're saying.
And from now on, anything that comes in front of council or an amendment that's coming out of fund balance? Can it be on the amendment that's coming out of fund balance?
Hundred percent that, yes.
I mean, I don't know why the mayor's office and administration wouldn't do that.
So again, uh, we agree one hundred percent. A lot of times that motions say where that money is coming from. Um, some of these, and that's why I want you and encourage you to look into these, some of them are just a matter of putting it in the budget because the money might be coming from a grant source, but it's not currently allocated anywhere in the budget. So we still need approval to put that in the budget. Um, so if you have a few minutes, which we're all already here, again, I encourage you to go through them one by one.
So I have a question for Michelle. Um, so the police department in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, what was their overtime?
Um, I do not have that in front of me. I'm sorry.
Shannon, would you have that?
I can get it.
It was like one point four million.
One point four million.
If you give me just like literally thirty seconds.
How many officers were employed?
Twenty three?
Twenty three.
Yeah, the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four.
And can I know how many officers were employed then?
Uh, one point seven million.
Okay, and how many officers?
I don't know.
No, we had less than forty, for sure.
Twenty three?
Less than forty.
I have more.
Nine, twenty two.
And, and can I get twenty two also? I'm sorry.
Twenty two, twenty three was one point one million of overtime.
Twenty two, twenty three?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think we're fully staffed in twenty two, twenty three, that's probably right.
Twenty two, twenty three goes one point one nine. And then in twenty four you said, I mean, twenty three, twenty four, you said it was one point seven?
Yeah, yes.
No, this year we're about one point seven as well. Or one, one point six.
And how many officers did we have, twenty two, twenty three, and twenty three, twenty four?
Twenty two, twenty three, twenty three, twenty four, and twenty four, twenty five.
Five, yeah.
This year we're asking for one point two with this amendment.
We asked for a million, we asked for another two hundred thousand?
We're asking for four hundred thousand.
Yeah, we asked, you guys asked for nice, it was We gave you nine fourteen, right? But if you're talking police?
Yeah.
So you asked for one point four. One point two.
It's
No, we're asking for one point two total. The, the
No, because
There was, the original budget was nine fourteen. There was an amendment to reduce it by forty thousand because you moved. Um, you increased the number of dispatchers, so that salary was removed from overtime. It was moved from overtime to salaries to make that difference. So the amended budget for overtime for this year is eight seventy four. We're asking for four hundred thousand for a total of one point two.
One point two seven four?
Yes.
That's almost one point three.
Sure. Well, it's
If we were to round up or round down, it would go
Yeah, one point four.
One point three, one point
I mean, the budget season and budget ends, it's gonna, it's gonna expand with, with, with the
What about the fire department?
Are you asking for this year?
Yeah.
It, it's in the information, uh, we supplied you. It's
They're asking for three hundred thousand and the budget for the overtime was seven fourteen, so it's a million fourteen now with the amendment. How about the, uh, DPW?
So for the highway department, that's the only one that's asking for an amendment. Their, yeah, and this is in the packet that you have, their current budget is a hundred and they're asking for an additional one fifty five.
Do you have the total amount of, of the whole DPW departments overtime budget?
Well, there's multiple depart, departments.
I'm saying all the DPW that goes under the DPW.
Including water?
Including water.
Are you, do you want the budgeted amount or what they
Just the overtime budget, yeah, the overtime budget.
Budgeted amount?
Yeah.
So for building maintenance, they are budgeted for a hundred thousand. DPW highway is budgeted for a hundred thousand. Water admin, it's budgeted for five twenty one, seven twenty four.
We got ten million dollars from ARPA. Where'd it go? You just keep saying that it, you know, it went into losses, revenue losses. Where is it? And all I keep seeing is revenue losses.
So I think you saw the increase in the fund balance from twenty two to twenty, I forgot what exact dates, but the four million to the nine million, that's where the increase happened.
Blew it? It blew like that?
It was paid in the union
It was blown. You just blew it all the way.
It was paid in the union contract payouts.
You know, you look at other cities that had twenty four million dollars coming in, like Lavonia, Garden City, they got a, they got a new state of the art civic center. What do we got to showcase for these, for this community? So embarrassing.
I think it's unfair to compare us to other communities that were in a different situation than us at the time, that had salaries that were much higher than what we had here. So at the time in twenty twenty two, yeah, one hundred percent. If you want to see what the salary rates were back in the day, it was really different.
You're right. It was sixty thousand and the city was still thriving.
Okay, well, we were having issues recruiting new employees. So again, we had to make a decision at the time. The council agreed with it.
I mean, do you think our process in the city is bad recruiting? Cause that's the only issue we hear, that there's something wrong. Maybe it's not our pay, maybe, maybe it's the staff.
So again, when we fixed the pay, the, the employees came. So it was
I truly believe our, 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 our base pretty competitive.
Now it is, yes.
So why can't we recruit now?
We have been recruiting.
Wh- where?
In the fire department, they're almost full
Where's the police department? How many, how many officers have we sold out?
Also working in the police department.
How many people are in the queue or how many people are in the academy? Or how many people are
There are three vacancies currently in the police department. So again, I think we're doing pretty well. Like, we have been recruiting for the positions that are available.
Good, you know, they're sure
Now, does that mean we need more positions? Yeah, one hundred percent, but we can't afford them, but we are getting the position still that we currently need.
How many police officers do we have in twenty two?
In twenty two?
I don't know.
We, we can look into it.
Honestly, I was floored. And this isn't supposed to be like a
No, no, it's just, you're trying to compare budgets, how much, uh, manpower we had done compared to manpower we had now and we're spending twenty five percent more with less people.
Councilman, the thing is, they're asking for one point seven million and we don't, we don't have it. So what's the plan to overcome this obstacle right now? We can't spend that one point seven million. Did, did you guys try to sit down with all the directors and see exactly what can be done? So we don't have to spend that money because we don't have it?
Well, like I said, a, a lot of it is coming from purchases that were already approved. So
No, not most of it. You have, you got overtime here. It's not most of it. Most of it is overtime. I mean, overtime right here, you just got almost between police, fire and DPW highway, that's
A hundred.
No more. It's like almost nine hundred thousand. But that's almost a million dollars just overtime.
Right.
I mean, I don't know why we had to wait till this time to figure out something or we maybe everybody figured, okay, we'll just ask for more money and money is gonna show up on trees and we're gonna spend it. But I guess not. Money doesn't show up on trees and we don't have the money. And the administration needs to sit down with every director and figure out something.
So I, I can't speak as to the
No, no, I'm not talking to you, Shannon, but I'm just saying, I'm talking to the administration as a whole.
Right, but for, for
I know it's easy to ask for money, but the harder part is to do something about it, to do something about the issues that we're facing. We don't have the one point seven million, so the mayor needs to sit down with all his directors and figure out something, plain and simple. The, I mean, this is, I'm talking about my, you know, on behalf of myself, so I don't know about the other council members.
I totally agree.
Yeah. You know, like, I mean, we can see, keep sitting here all night, going over and over. We don't have the money. You guys need to figure out something. Instead of just sitting here all night going over the budget. We don't have the money. There's no one point seven million dollars. We can't spend from more from the fund balance. The administration needs to figure out something.
So for, related to the purchases that were already approved. Do you want, are you
Well, I need to review, and we need to review those again, please, those purchases to see.
Those all need to be emailed.
Anything coming from the fund balance, please email them back to us. We need to see exactly what's been approved from the fund balance, if you don't mind. Yeah, go ahead.
So it's all the ones that are listed on here?
No, everything. From the past too. Why, why are we using fund balance? You know, you know, we
I speak to what happened
You know, I
But I'm saying for this year, what we're asking for, for this time, everything that is, has been approved or everything that we're asking for based on what has been approved is listed in here.
I, I understand that, Michelle. I mean, I Please forgive me. Must be the voice today. Yeah.
Fifty five was the twenty two police officers count.
And how much do we currently have?
Forty.
No, forty five?
Forty five? Forty five, right? Forty five.
And what was the budget in twenty two for the police department?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Correct, that's just majority.
Correct.
Well, that's the majority, right? That's without two director positions, correct? That's without two other director positions?
The total police department budget in twenty two was fourteen million, two hundred and fifteen, nine forty seven.
Fourteen million, two hundred?
Fifteen, nine forty seven.
How much of that was overtime?
I only have the proposed budget right now. Can you go into it?
That, what was, uh, what was this year's, uh, dispatch year's budget that we gave the police department?
Twenty twenty two, twenty one, twenty two.
It was over fifteen?
Yes, sixteen.
Sixteen?
Twenty one, twenty two. Yeah, that's the budget, okay.
And I, honest to God, I'm so disappointed. Like this is like, that's your hope for
So over budget for twenty two was one million dollars.
How much? One million?
One million.
Okay, and how much was the budget for twenty four?
Eight seventy four. Eight seventy four?
No, no, he's talking about the whole police budget.
Police department.
Oh, police, sorry. Eight seventy four is the overtime, if that's your next question.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna write it for you, sorry to answer it again.
Fifty million, eight hundred and eighty nine, nine six one.
Fifteen million, eight hundred, eighty nine?
Well, that's sixteen million.
Sixteen million, close enough with the overtime is. So we had forty five officers in twenty two, you said, correct?
No.
Fifty five.
Fifty five, I'm sorry. And we currently have forty, thirty? Forty five, so we're ten officers.
We don't have officially forty five. We have people that are coming to the academy and loading up. We've, we have, we have budgeted for forty five. We don't have forty five. Yeah.
Oh, forty two. Okay, so forty two.
Uh, forty two in service, but we're paying for forty five. Some people on leave or whatever, right?
No, no, no. We have forty two in total.
Yes, there's three vacancies.
Yeah, but we budgeted for, the money's there for them. We know it was back in the fund balance.
So there was almost a, and at one point, I wanna say a one point six million dollar difference in the budget in one year. Now we're coming back asking for seven hundred thousand.
Sorry, it's three year difference with a union negotiated contract that increased salaries in there.
And, and you gotta remember something, counsel, when you're short staffed, you have more overtime.
I, I respect that.
I respect that.
But no, no, I, it's reality, I understand, but it's, we're getting back into our staffing and trying to, uh, trying to recruit and hire. I'm trying to say that, because I seen you're trying, trying, trying. It took three years to fill in these vacancies. It's cost the city millions of dollars in overtime, when you could have just hired people.
We can't just hire people.
Don't let people go.
For no reason. Based on accusations.
Again, I'm not familiar with what you're referring to.
I know, I don't wanna get into the back of things like that. Let's stick to the, let's stick to the, uh, the study session here. Um, I'm gonna ask this one question real quick, Michelle. Actually, I'm, actually, I'm gonna ask this question directed to Mariana. I think we're kinda like going through the thick of things and we've kind of, you know, we see what's between everything here now. I'm gonna ask you this question. Do you think the city can afford a five percent increase on these police officers?
Absolutely not.
So you can't afford it?
I do not believe we can.
I think what happened was we negotiated in badly.
I wasn't at the negotiation table.
I would like to hear from, uh, Chief Brogan first, then I'm gonna go to Chief Harhead, Harhead after, I'm sorry. Chief Haidar, please forgive me. Chief, all right, good evening, counsel. You know how I feel truly about our relationship, but this is bigger than all of us right now.
I actually understand.
It's bigger than all of us. And I hope now you're kind of understanding why we, we said no at first to the budget amendment and why we're here today, like I know in, in the past, you know, Mayor Palaco, God rest his soul, had to make the tough decision. Am I right? Didn't you guys all have to take a ten percent?
We did.
Yeah, everybody did.
Yeah.
And this administration is gonna have to figure it out. They're no better than what the past administration was. Same way they ask you guys to make tough decisions, well, the administration needs to figure out how they're gonna figure out this tough decision. Um, but I, I still wanna hear why you feel like, and I know that you gave a really nice presentation. I was looking at it here. Um, I'm sorry that I didn't reach out to you. I was kinda wanted
It's okay.
It was to be the public, be able to see this. I didn't reach out to you or, or, uh, the police chief in regards to the depths of it. I just spoke briefly as to what was happening. I know we emailed me, you, the police chief a little bit and the mayor.
Okay. All right, well, if I could just kind of briefly explain what we have in front of you there, it's, um, it shows, uh, our total positions that we were short and kind of, kind of a, a timeline. So you see in July of twenty twenty four, when we started, we were down six firefighters. And then the number on the right, once, once we hire a firefighter, they have to go through a process. It takes about three months. And once, once they pass that, they, they're considered manpower, where they now count as a, as a firefighter and it's no longer causing overtime. So, so the number on the far right column shows the, uh, how, how much we're short manpower, not just positions, like, like Like, like, so you see in October, we hired two people, so we were now down four positions, but we were still down six manpower, cause they weren't, they weren't manpower yet. So you kind of follow along, um, you know, we had uh, some retirements. We did have O J I. The reason why I listed that one is because it's gonna be. We were told four to six months. I've seen this injury three or four times, and that's about how long it takes. Um, the, the doctors are optimistic that they should be back in four months. And that's, that's April, which is what I kinda have reflected on here as well. So right now, we are still short six positions after, after all of the hiring we've done in it, but we're almost to the point, you can see in April. I'm, I'm anticipating to be down only three positions, um, May, two positions, and then June, we should be, we should be a full staffing. And then you're gonna see a massive, massive reduction. And now the number, the three hundred thousand dollar number that we did was a straight projection of what we've been spending. So I would like to think it would be below that, um. Cause you can see it's gonna, in April, we'll be, we'll be down three positions. But these positions that were short are ju- simply keeping firefighters on the trucks. It's like, like, we really need to have, have this done. And it's, and it's, and it's my responsibility that I, that we came up with a number that was short. I wish we could have got, um, you know, filled these earlier. The injuries is something that we can't, uh, can't predict, although when you have. You know, some older people were working a lot more overtime, you're gonna have more injuries, um, unfortunately. So, um. I would hope that you guys can take this in, into consideration that we're, you know, we're almost there. We're so close. Um, if we can keep, keep the staffing on the trucks, that's extremely important to me for the safety of the citizens. And I know this is unfair to, to lay that on you, but the safety of the firefighters and the citizens is really dependent on keeping all of our trucks up and running. Um, so I, I really hope that we can come up with something, um. And I'm not sure any other suggestions, or maybe I can meet with the union. And I will show you also on the, on one of the further pages, uh. See, I have, on the next page, there's our shift assignment. And you can see the, the reason why I included this was, we, we moved people around to try to keep the shifts short. I mean, the shortage is spread out amongst the shift. So like, you can see on C unit, uh, uh, the, the names in blue are new firefighters. Ca- Casca is manpower, he does count, but the uh, the, well, their blue name up, up on top, uh, Balejan is not manpower yet. C unit also has the injured firefighter. So every, every unit is down two firefighters still. But come April, we're gonna start seeing improvements, and then it's gonna go from there, and, and you'll see a massive, massive reduction in overtime. For all of next year, and certainly for, I, I would hope it would be below the three hundred thousand dollars we asked for. Sorry to come up with an exact number. Um, but I'm really, I'm really optimistic that, you know, things, things are, un, you know, it's underway that we're gonna have this fixed.
Thank you uh, so much, Chief Brogan. I got a quick question for you. Do you think maybe hundred and fifty K if we couldn't ask to start off, would be a doable number for you?
A- absolutely.
And I'm not saying it's gonna be a task, I don't know where we're gonna get the money.
No, I, I understand. I, I was gonna even suggest that, and, and I'm, I'm gonna sit down with the union and we're gonna rack our brains and try to come up with something too. It's there, they take the services of citizens every bit as seriously as I do. We don't wanna be in a position where we have to shut down a truck. We just, we, we don't have, we wouldn't have the coverage. Um, we do too many runs per day, and that, that would be too mu- the, our mutual aid, people say, well, you can lean on mutual aid, they would not cover, you know, we do twenty five runs a day. Take one of the trucks out of there, they're not gonna be in our city, you know, five, six times a day. That just isn't gonna work out.
Absolutely.
Um, so.
Any questions for the chief?
Um, no.
Thank you, chief.
Just so you know, I don't think a hundred and fifty is gonna be enough, cause they're already one thirty five over. Putting that out there.
What do you mean, one thirty five over? They already used one thirty five over the?
The budget.
Over the seven fourteen?
Yes.
And it's already been used? Okay, how uh, it wasn't approved by us, how, how was it used on before? Yeah, it looks, it looks like that did go over, so, um, I, you know, I didn't realize that, how, how far over it had gotten, and it was, again, the, the injuries in, in the short, the. How short we were, so.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. I, I don't, I don't put that pressure on you. Look, I'll tell you straight up, not because I, I always defend our fire and police, but. The truth is, if we would have hired more officers three, four years ago, you wouldn't be over today. That's the truth. And I'm not gonna have you take the blame for it. The truth is, if we were to hire seven more firefighters, same thing right now, like we say over, you know, we have forty one or forty three. We have forty officers, three in the queue, bull crap. We had fifty five in twenty two. Only thing we budgeted was forty five. The reality is, we should be at sixty more. You know, we should, we should be at twenty more officers. We should be at fifteen more firefighters. That's how you provide, having a, a shortage and having to, you know, avoid these things and, and ask once, on the first day of Lent. That's what you do. Thank you.
Council chair, the big question here, one hundred and thirty five thousand was spent without our, without our approval. How was that spent? I mean, like, who, who approved that spending?
Employees continue having to work.
No, no, I understand. They need to work and they needed the overtime, but still they need to go through the process, coming here for approval. Who was supposed to bring it here for approval? That's a big question. I don't know.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Shannon, how, how over is the police department?
Well, let the, let the police department do its presentation. Let Mr. Chief, Chief Hader is here. Thank you very much, services, Chief Brogan. Thank you for your services, Chief Hader. Thank you, uh.
Lieutenant.
That's awesome, thank you. I'm very, I'm sorry. So, um. You guys keep asking if we, if we, the department heads met up with the mayor. We did meet with the mayor.
Yes.
And we did go over some of our budget issues. I'm basically gonna talk about the same thing the fire department's chief came up and talked about. It's, for, for most of our stuff. It's a manpower issue. Um, so after the meeting, we got together, the department uh, execs, myself and lieutenant here, along with the director. And we uh, kinda went over our overtime, figured out what we could get rid of, what we needed to keep. There wasn't much that we could get rid of. Um, to continue to keep policing the, the city at different heights the proper way. Um, a lot of our overtime is cause of manpower. And it's also because of some stuff that's in the officer's contracts that we just can't violate. And if we do violate, we start to get grievances and, you know, morale issues and lawsuits and stuff like that.
I don't mean to be that guy.
Yeah.
That never, ever stopped the administration from doing the things that they continue to do. They've been served with so many different grievances, and that does not faze this administration. But continue on. And maybe you don't want to, and I respect you for taking on that role. And I, actually, I commend you for that, but. The truth is, that never stopped the mayor and his staff.
I mean, if, if we, if we wanted to go down that path, that, not saying you want to do that, not saying I wanna do that. Then we wouldn't have enough staffing for the police department to continue to serve.
I don't think we have enough staffing currently, sir.
I mean, we have enough to serve, but if we went down that route, or we started saying we're not paying overtime and things like that, and, you know, we just wouldn't be able to be out here. Policing the streets at different heights the proper way, you know, plus there's, correct me wrong, but there's something in their contract that has. Staffing issues, correct? Like manpower?
Yeah, so we have uh, on the patrol level, we have a, a minimum mandatory staffing. Uh, so anytime it goes below that, we are, by the contract, we have to, we have to call in somebody for overtime or force somebody to stay over. Uh, I, I realize that, that's a major budgetary concern, but however, it's also a safety concern, not only for officers that are on duty, but for the citizens, right? We, we need at least a certain amount of patrol cars to patrol in the city, uh, for, for, you know, whatever run may come out or emergency might happen. So, um, we certainly understand that, the budgetary side of it, um, but there's, there's also a whole nother side of. Uh, safety of our, of our officers and the safety of our citizens, and then just the overall morale, like, you know. People are more willing to not just be proactive, but maybe uh, take part in some things if they're not overburdened, overstaffed. Uh, forced to work overtime, but not burnt out, right? So those are the things that we try to, we try to.
Fix that by hiring more officers.
Yeah, yeah, we, well, I mean, before we get into hiring process of more officers, I sent you an email. And, and most of the stuff I put in the email, if you'd like, I could go over it. Most of it's in their contract, that it's required. Like, for example, most of our money comes from leave, leave work overtime. Leave work overtime is when we're short on the streets and someone's forced to stay. They have to stay and they have to work to continue to have the minimum manpower in the streets. Uh, there's also money spent on field training officers, where an officer is the field training officer for a new member that comes in the police department. Um, there's, you know, there's stuff that we just can't prevent, like late police runs. If you get a late police run, and you're, have to process that scene or stay over, that's overtime. Um, if we're short on dispatchers, if the officer's filling in a position as a dispatcher, he gets paid extra money. Than his normal duties, because now he's filling in for a dispatcher, which goes back to manpower.
You know, if we had a dispatch room that was supposed to be done, except three years ago? You know what would happen? If we had more dispatchers, they would wanna work there. Three years ago, we, we budgeted for it, and two years ago, we budgeted for it. Last year, we budgeted for it. Not that, yeah, but can you tell me how much money we have right? I know that, I think yours is one thirty six for the fire department already. What are we for right now with the uh, overtime spending, Shannon? Can you tell me that number, Shannon? Sixty four what?
Sixty four thousand?
Sixty four thousand.
Over, over the eight seventy four.
Yeah, that's the one thirty six is over the.
Over is uh, seven fourteen for the fire department.
That's not too bad, and you're asking for four hundred thousand?
Yeah.
You believe that the four hundred thousand is all you're gonna need from now to June thirty eighth?
Yes.
Are you sure it's sixty four thousand, by the way? You sure it's only sixty four thousand over?
So the sixty four thousand, that would be included in the four hundred thousand they're asking, or this is over the four hundred thousand? Included?
And I think we're budgeted for eight hundred and seventy four thousand.
That's what we did for, yeah, that's true budget.
Now, I mean, when you're, I know you're gonna go back to like, if, if we give you this money, how are you gonna spend it? Are you gonna go over? I don't think so. We have uh. We have forty three, we have forty two current members.
Forty one.
The forty one?
Yeah.
And we have one that's leaving.
Yep.
So, so we're at forty one. No.
Why can't we retain this? We're, we're giving good pay, giving all these benefits. Why are they leaving us? Not that, clearly, the money's not the issue.
Well, I could tell you that we, we interviewed four people today, and we're interviewing four people next Wednesday. So I say by April first.
We are following X seventy eight on this, right?
Oh, yeah. Oh, X seventy eight, or seventy eight. I got a tattoo, X seventy eight. Yeah, we wouldn't violate X seventy eight.
Yeah, I mean, it's been violated many times.
Well, not here.
Good.
I appreciate, I'm glad that you honor not violating X seventy. So, um, we have eight people. We plan on probably bringing. Uh, some on board by April to bring us up to our forty five. And uh, that's the plan. So we believe that by hiring these, you know, whatever numbers we need by April first, it's gonna reduce. Probably, I would say, what do you say, fifty percent?
Yeah, but that being said, along with, just like the fire department, those, those new members, don't, don't count as staffing towards our staffing levels immediately. Until they're done with their field training, right? So, um. So, so that's a pretty rough estimate, you know, depending on, on how fast or how quick that goes. I know a lot of the people we're looking at right now are coming from other departments, so we're, we're bringing in a lot of experience, which will be helpful for uh, I know, we have a lot of young people too, so. It's gonna be helpful for everybody, I think, with, with the amount of uh, experience we're trying to bring in here.
And they'll be M P O certified, not, we're not gonna send them to the academy, so they'll be boots on the ground, which, which is gonna help us with this sort of. Thank you, chief. Any questions for the chief?
Um, yeah, so. Chief, you, you and I had a talk. Um, these new people coming in, we're bringing in, do we have the vehicles for them and?
Yes, yeah.
We do.
Vehicles for them, uh, we have enough to uh, equip them with uh, the equipment that's necessary to go out in the streets, like their. Uniform, their, their belt gear and all that. Everything's in place for us to bring them on and give them the proper equipment. So they can uh, hit the streets.
So we don't need cars.
We do need cars, but that's something we're working on now that we uh, we plan on presenting in the near future. Coming out of the forfeiture fund. So that's got nothing to do with what we're talking about here. The councilman's, uh, he's asking at this couple of meetings ago, before you were the chief, acting chief. Um, he asked about, do we need cars? The former chief said, well, he said, we don't need any cars. Now, the rumors starting to come out that. Yeah, we need cars, and why we need cars is because, obviously, we're, we're hiring more people, but there's other units we're gonna open up in the near future. That's gonna require more cars. For example, traffic enforcement, uh, a special ops division. So that's gonna require us to have not only more officers, but more vehicles. But we're budgeted for forty five officers. We have enough cars to staff forty five officers. The cars that we have, you know.
That's, that's for a whole different subject, you know. I don't, I mean, I think it's the budget. Tell us, any other question?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you so much, chief.
So, one more thing I wanna add, and, and I haven't gone to a police department meeting for a long time, but I recall last year in M M R M A, and this continues to be the trend. Spread across the country in all police departments. Everyone is facing shortages with police departments. So I know that you keep blaming the city for us not doing certain things, but if you look at the news and if you just Google. Police shortages, thousands of articles come up from multiple municipalities with regards to shortages with police departments. So.
I completely agree with you.
Just wanna put that out there.
But what happened in the city was the mayor's rogue vengeance on people to fire people.
That's precisely why I'm saying the statement, because it is not a unique situation in our community.
It is.
I just wanna put that out there.
It is.
We're not gonna turn this into a debate.
Twenty seven officers.
Go, thank you.
It is.
Thank you.
We can have those opinions on Facebook. Let's keep us sticking to the business. Uh, same thing for the chief, you said.
And the multiple investigations against us, don't forget that.
Come on, so come on, guys. Let's, let's, you know what, it's, it's, it's a holiday, religious time right now.
Like the truth.
I know, I know. And I will agree with council. I've, I've never seen anything happen that's dressed for this. But that's here nor there. Um, would any other director would like to come up and speak regarding their budget? I'm not gonna ask everybody. Hang on one second. I'd like to hear from the directors, then we'll take it over to you, madam, my treasurer. I know you came in from Illinois, you're spending uh, holidays for your mom, it's your mom's birthday. I wanna get this rolling, rolling. Shannon, I'm gonna go to, I'm, before I even go to you too, Lynn, I'm gonna go, or madam, I'm gonna go with.
Okay.
Uh, John Dancy from D P W. And I hope now you understand why we're trying to get the gist of things.
Yeah, that's always, like I said.
That's a great hair.
From my uh, thank you. From my uh, perspective with D P W. I mean, I get a lot of feedback from the employees and him being, been fairly new to the city. I don't know, I haven't seen anything like this before in my life, but whatever. Rather than trying to reduce what we're paying in overtime, I just, I'm the most disliked guy down there. I just cut it all. So unfortunately, like you said, you gotta make tough decisions. We can't buy any more salt, we can't buy any more coal patch, we don't have enough people, but we can't afford to hire people. I don't quite understand it, but. I'm just kind of gonna ask for none. I know we're over in one specific area. We might be over in overtime, it's cause we don't have enough employees. But we pay like thirty five grand to start a D P W employee, which. If there's no overtime, I don't know who's gonna apply. It's not an administration issue, it's just a. General city issue, I don't know. It's almost laughable. I talked to other directors in other cities and they. Say, you pay this much to start and you have this many main breaks and you have six people? So I don't know where the best solve is, but when it comes to like budget amendments, I know when I talk to Shannon. How much you need for overtime, and then when I talk to, like, old data, right, lo- look at old data and talk to some of the employees. They say sometimes the budget is wrong, not our operations. I mean, like, when you say, how do you get to that point? The overtime goes, cause it goes every two weeks. You can't just tell people, hey, main brakes running, bye. Car accident, bye. Right? You can't just send these employees off a job site. So like, there's no way to bring the budget amendments. Ahead of time, but I guess in my position, I just cut it all, so. There's no reason, whatever was in there for the D P W overtime, if we're over it there, we cut all the spending too, so. It's just gotta come out the bottom lines at the bottom, right? That's all I'm saying, is like, I just cut it all. I mean, I don't know where the city's kind of at at that point, but when it comes to me and asking for budget amendments for the D P W. There's no reason to say, hey, we need two hundred thousand. Oh, we can give you a hundred thousand. Just make it zero. And then just keep our budget where it's supposed to be, whether it was something, the adminis- and I just challenge you not to make your guys' job harder in the future by. Just arguing back and forth. All it does is make everybody's job, if you change positions, harder. You don't want that, like. So, if you guys have questions for me, fine, but like, that's just kinda where I'm at.
Uh, I don't, I don't think you need to just completely cut everything off, and I, I know right now.
I mean, we're hemorrhaging this.
But um, look, at the end of the day, you're gonna have water main breaks. I think it was Mrs. La Point reached out to me, and she waited almost twenty four hours for a water main break.
I know.
You know, I'm glad she got it fixed and resolved, but the truth is, this is happening, so cutting it off is not the solution. And that's not your decision to completely make. There's a, there's a, there's a man in charge that says that I'm gonna, I'm gonna fix our city. Right? Well, your city's not fixed. You're not even at, you're not even at one of the most important meetings.
Right? Well, your city's not fixed. You're not even at, you're not even at one of the most important meetings ever. You haven't been in a meeting in six months. And I'm not trying to make this political. Truth is, man, you can't point your finger and keep saying things are bad, things are bad, things are bad, and not show up to a council meeting or show up to a. A a meeting where we're talking about the budget. Because all they see is a reflection is is. The mayor should have been here. It's not fair for the chief to have to keep taking these, kind of these, you know, these punches. Some of these questions, honest to God, I respect Mariana so much for some of the stuff that she has to take. It's not easy. You know, sometimes it seems like me and Mariana going at it, but it's not, it's, I think Mariana wants what's best and we want what's best. I think the mayor wants what's best too, but he's not here to tell us that. Um, but I don't think you need to completely cut yourself off. I think. The the mayor, who signed up to be fiscally responsible, needs to come up with a solution, not you. He needs to come up with the solution, that's his job. He's getting paid by taxpayers to say, I'm gonna figure it out. That's it. That's not Mariana's job. Mariana's job is to make sure that the data is operating properly. Not Mariana's job to figure out how to find the money and do everything. It's also not Shannon's job. Shannon's job is to tell you what's exactly happening inside the department. Her job isn't to sit there and say, well, we need to have a conversation with all the directors. No! That is the mayor's job. The mayor needs to talk, he needs to take responsibility. Not come out and make a video, talk about saying, look, for you're the people that are running against me. And I don't wanna get up on the tank.
That's too young, that's the council. Um. So director asking for hundred and fifty five thousand for the highway. The highway, did it take care of the water main breaks too, or what did they exactly do?
Some of them have been called in to help with main breaks, especially during the winter when we can't get to a main break, because we have a crew of five and like sixty main breaks a month.
What's their main job in the highway department?
Salting, plowing. There's been a lot of salting this year. There hasn't been a whole lot of snowstorms, but there's been a lot of salting.
Okay.
Sometimes they get called in to salt four main breaks that can't get repaired fast enough. Cause you either, you guys have seen some of the contractor invoices I've sent you, and there's more coming, because there's times where if you got five employees, hey. We can't just work them into the ground. So most of that highway overtime is. Trees, when I first got here, which I've kinda cut all that out. I just said, listen, if it's not falling over the road right away, we're just not coming in for it, salting. Um, and just to prevent some like grievances, I know Mo made a statement, oh, there's no problem with grievances here. I've had to just. Basically, in.
I I never said that.
I was like, yeah, but in order to prevent that, I just told the contractors, you gotta leave too, and then they get mad, and they're like, I don't know. You know what I'm saying? Like, the union's gonna argue that if you cut their overtime, but we have contractors doing what is typically a union work. They're gonna argue that, but. What can you do? If you don't have any money, like you said, there's no way to say, hey, buy a five hundred dollar bicycle, here's a hundred dollars. Right?
That's what's happening.
Yeah.
We bought a five, but you know what's funny? We already bought the five hundred dollar bicycle. Now we have the.
Do we have the bicycle?
That that highway overtime though is trees, a little bit of coal patching, a lot of snow plowing.
Well, this is, hopefully, we're done. How much money did we spend for the one fifty five they're asking for? So, over a, wow.
I don't know.
Probably a two fifty five? And they had two fifty five right now?
We're talking about over, they spent already from the one fifty, they had two hundred right now?
Uh, so they're already from whatever they're asking, they already spent a hundred thousand, over a hundred thousand.
I saw the uh recommended budget that was initially presented was two hundred thousand, it got cut to a hundred thousand. When you guys approved it, because you needed to balance it, so you say, hey, cut it somewhere. It's easy to just cut it without realizing that like, that.
The work needs to be done.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's cut now, I really did, I just, I'm like, we're worth enough.
For this closure, we did not cut nothing. That is the mayor's budget. We didn't cut it. The mayor, Mariana, Michelle, former controller, they sat together, they presented us with the budget. That's what happened. We did not cut nothing. Mayor, in the, in the staff.
But then, but then he's still a city effort, I feel like. Everybody plays a role in it, but.
And you know, it's like PTSD for, because we're always getting blamed. You go on social media, everybody says our council shows look like crap, you know, they use. Like, oh, but the reality is, we're fighting your money. We're fighting for your taxpaying money. That's all we're trying to do. Here, nobody knew coming into this meeting that I knew the information of almost five million dollars was missing from our fund balance, because. We were approving things from our fund balance and they weren't telling us. Cause you know how many times I've approved it where it says G L account zero one one six four five, blah, 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 blah. I've never seen one that says some fund balance, like, never. Those are never given to us. It was a being switched.
Yeah. Some, some people could argue too, paying overtime is cheaper than hiring employees. Some people, I've heard that be argued. Because you don't have that legacy cost, but either way, in my opinion, you can just put in zero budget amendment overtime for D P W. I mean, we.
That's not, that's not a solution, but.
Well, you just, you said at the end of the year, if it all, bottom lines aren't good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, John.
Can't be over budget until you get to the end of the budget year, in my opinion, right? Doesn't that make sense too?
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Thank you so much, director. By the way, man is doing a phenomenal job, like, light years ahead.
You know, just uh, just a quick uh, you know, on uh Director Dancy, he just called you randomly, just to check up, see what's going on, you know? Get the random calls from him, and I appreciate those.
I swear this guy is, he's amazing.
You're a good man, Director.
Just proactive.
Real quick, okay, for ours, for the election one, there's capital outlay, which is at fifty seven thousand, because we had. The two grants that we received, and in that motion, um, I requested that those G Ls be increased in. In capital outlay, or the revenue come in. So I guess, I don't understand. Why if it was asked if it's being presented again. So just that.
You, you, you're.
I put it in my motion, you guys approved it, and I requested that the revenues be in place as well as the capital.
And you got that money through the state, right?
One's through the, one we have in hand, the other one I have to ask for reimbursement.
Okay. Not even technically from the state, it's not even like, technically, we're not asking for any.
No, 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 it's.
This is offset by an additional revenue, which is also indicated in this document.
So, but my.
There's no, no effect on fund balance here.
Right.
Okay.
But my question was, if it was in the motion, does it have to be in the budget amendment?
If it doesn't, if in the motion, it doesn't specifically say to amend the budget to this whatever, then we have to ask for it again. If it does say that.
It does say that. It's had like to, for the controller to do the revenues.
Oh, it's my fault.
Okay, and so that was one question. And then um Shannon said that she's gonna have to add some more to mine. Because we did have an insurance claim. So that was a capital outlay that hasn't, so that would have to be a budget amendment. And then one more quick one, okay? And um, the revenues, I didn't know, so the fifty seven thousand is there. And I guess the M M R M A is there, there too. But we did get reimbursement for the presidential primary, which was a hundred and eighteen thousand. Then for early voting, which is not a thought, but it still is. I don't know where that money goes. So that, I think, I, it was just a learning experience, I think, for all of us. That's why I wanted to bring it up.
For now.
What's that?
Put it towards D P W.
I mean, was it already in the budget from last year, but it was just this year? So that's a revenue portion.
Yes.
So was it in there? Okay, so. When is it gonna be accounted for? Where did it go?
It, it's accounted for, we just didn't do an amendment for it. For revenues, if you get extra, then that's.
So it will go in, and eventually it's gonna come back to the general fund anyway, but I want it to be, you know.
It's recorded where it's supposed to be recorded.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's.
Are you sure that with the treasurer, with the clerk and the treasurer, actually?
But is it is? For the reimbursement? Okay, I guess I didn't see it, because I see the grants here in the M M R M A, but I've never seen the reimbursement for the hundred and twenty thousand. Okay, so, will we see that?
Yep, like I said, it's.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
And one more question, you had asked about the motion for the budget amendments. So on June twenty fifth, there was a motion that um came forward for budget amendments. There was no second. Okay, so it wasn't considered. Um, that was prior to the budget approval though. So I don't know.
After the budget approval.
There was, I didn't see anything. I went through the end of August, just going through the minutes. The only one was uh to increase the ordinance for the. For the new ordinance officers, that's all I seen, so I, and I don't know.
I mean, if somebody can look further for, and send this to, send this to us would be great.
I just.
Mister uh, go ahead.
I had two items uh on the budget amendment. One of them was related to uh peg funding. Uh, asking for some from the, the peg funding to be transferred on a line item, so that uh it would be available to spend. Uh, on that one, so I, I would ask for that to go through. Um, my other one is uh for the larger amount. That is to actually pay for our wind stream bill. If you remember, I did come before you, and this is actually coming out of a different funding source. Um, to um update our Mitel and all our, our phone systems. The wind stream bill and why this was actually being tackled, um. Uh, we had, um, right now, we have like fifty some analog lines. And wind stream increased our bill, where each analog line was costing us four hundred dollars a month. Literally on Friday, um, we are now able to be able to transfer forty one of those lines. Um, to a SIP trunk, to UMA, again, which you've already provided. Um, the most, you already approved the motion to move forward. So mine was an unexpected where we budgeted about six thousand dollars a month for our phone system that we have. That um went up to over about twenty eight thousand dollars a month. When that was recognized, that's when I started tackling, identifying all the numbers and what we can do to be able to reduce it. But in the meantime, to make sure we had phone system in place, it was um an unexpected phone bill increase for that.
Is this coming out of the fund balance, or is it coming?
Uh, right now, it would have to come out of the fund balance, because we did not budget. I, I couldn't have budgeted. We, when we presented the budget. We were budgeting six thousand dollars a month for our phones, and it went up to twenty eight thousand dollars a month. I'm, like I said, literally on Friday. Our bill should go down about seventeen thousand dollars until we can finalize, and a lot of it deals with, just sort of kind of put a little background into it, is. Because of all the different buildings, Windstream themselves didn't know all of our phone lines were at. They actually documented them in the wrong locations. So I had identified those phone lines, and especially with um the Justice Center, um with the uh. Why some of them were analog, I, I, I don't know. No one really could understand. We actually had twenty some of these lines. That were put in place in two thousand seventeen, that were never connected for anything, that we were just paying for them since two thousand seventeen. And I had to take the time to go through and try to identify all these numbers, and literally find where these numbers um are at. So, I, I just wanna make the background why that um. Um, why I'm forecasting over budget, and and that I try to take pride in my budget, making sure I don't go over, but this was an unexpected increase. Um, from Windstream provider, and to be honest, while we're leaving Windstream.
I'm gonna tell you, like I said, the cinch field.
Yeah, I understand, sir.
What do we do if we don't have it?
Uh, this, that's why I've been busting my butt trying to get this, so we do it. I, I. I, I have not spent in certain categories. I have not spent in certain categories, so hopefully, as we get a little bit closer towards the end, then I can actually transfer some from some of my other line items. Onto this line item to kinda.
We can't transfer that without the approval of the council.
Correct, correct, yep. I'm just waiting a little bit closer to make sure nothing else unexpected comes up.
Do what you can do.
So.
Do what you can do. And I'm gonna say that to everybody. We, we all have to figure it out.
I, I understand. Again, I just wanna make sure you understand, this is telecommunications. We don't pay this, okay? I, you know, it's phones.
It should have came to us before then. Can we get walkie talkies?
It's all the desktop phones, you know?
Shannon, which one not coming out of the fund balance? You said, so which ones?
My, my peg, not come out of fund balance.
Yeah. Which one is the cable TV, the ten thousand?
Correct, correct, sir.
Yeah, anything else? Okay, that's not, not much either.
All right, next up, I'm gonna let the treasurer go. Sorry, I see it, you came up real quick. Go ahead, Madam uh Treasurer. I thank you for coming here and being here with us today. We drove from a far, far distance.
Good evening, everyone. It's okay, this, we're elected to do this. This is very important. So I did wanna talk about our proposed budget amendments, and as the controller already alluded to. In my budget, it's moving money within the budget itself that's already approved for the treasurer's office. So it's not asking for additional money, it's just moving it from one line item to another. Um, in particular, my bottom line will still remain the same or be under. Normally, I'm under in my budget projections. And actual spending. Um, so therefore, I am compliant with the State of Michigan Public Act four thirty one. Of nineteen eighty four, and that's all I just wanted to let you know. So that's.
You're awesome, Treasurer, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, question, right, Director?
Sorry, I'm coming because he's new, and I have a little bit more of the history on this, so I'm supporting.
Correct, so we have um three motions here of, I guess, previous purchases that were, were made. During uh twenty three, twenty four, that need to still be approved for payment. Uh, the first being uh some repairs to the Wendell Park uh place cave for seventeen thousand dollars. Um, that is uh gonna be paid out of the Parks and Recreation Budget. Um, so that is the first one from our previous.
Yeah, so the motion is twenty four, three, twenty six. The amount is seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty three and forty cents. This was uh work that was already done and approved on June twenty seventh, so that's why it was missed in this year's budget. Is because I think that it, it happened right in the transition from one budget to another one, so it wasn't allocated. Like, the approval of the purchase happened the last fiscal year, but it wasn't accounted for in the current fiscal year.
Thank you.
The second one is, um. The engineering wood fiber for uh the Weddell Park as well, and the amount of five thousand, two hundred. Uh, same thing, this happened on June twenty seventh, the same day, and it was just not accounted for for the current fiscal year. Um, that's in the amount of five thousand, two hundred. And then the last one is the motion twenty four, three, forty five, which took place on July sixteen. So again, pretty soon after the budget was um finalized. And it was in the amount of sixty three thousand and seventy five thousand for the Central uh Park Marquee Sign. And forty four thousand, six hundred and twenty four of that is coming from the Wayne County Millage money. So it's only the difference that's really gonna be coming out of the general fund. So those are the three.
Out of the general.
Sorry, only a portion of it is coming out of the fund balance, so the sixty three minus the forty four thousand, whatever that difference is. I'm sorry, I didn't do the math for it. But it's about.
Thank you.
Twenty thousand dollars, a little bit less.
Okay, thank you.
I guess while I'm up here, I'm gonna speak on the water ones, uh.
Hang on, before you do that, I'd like to hear from the director, who is.
Okay.
The director of. How you doing? Being here with us?
Thank you. We're just breaking our fast, forgive us. Hey, no problem. Um, I believe we had two line items uh on for tonight. Um, one is going to be for paying off the escape that was totaled. Um, I think the insurance company sent us twenty two thousand, I believe. And we owe, I think, eleven to Enterprise Leasing, and so the balance of that will go into the general fund, I believe.
Is that the thirteen thousand or?
Um.
I don't see.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, it says it in the expl.
So, so both of these are actually purchases that you guys already approved. One of them was a motion from the prior year. Related to um the animal control outfitting. It, the purchase was approved, but they didn't actually make the purchase. So, until this year. So basically, that money went back to fund balance last year, and we're just looking to use that again this year. Um, and then the other one is um a motion that you guys, I think it was at the last meeting.
Um. The card?
Yeah, to pay off the balance.
So these two are in one here, the thirteen thousand, eight twenty seven?
Say that again.
These two numbers are combined in one?
Yes, the, the, the outfitting was, I think, around three thousand, and the other one was around ten thousand.
And that was for the safety equipment, the lights, and the uh radio for the dog truck. That was what was left from, I think, the eighty five thousand, that was approved for the dog truck. That was, that was left, so we used that for the radio and the lights. Um, and also, on the uh payoff of the escape, I know we asked for another vehicle. I found a used one, so we won't need to get one, and I'll put my vehicle into the fleet, and that'll save the city money, so.
Thank you. You're a very star, that, that's it, man. Thank you.
Finally, some good news today. Yeah, please.
Yes, um, I'm Lee LaFevre. I was a police officer for twenty seven years in Auburn Heights. I left here, I did five years as a contract uh employee to the US Marshal Service, protecting federal judges. Um, COVID hit. Covid hit, they laid everyone off. The old director said he needed some help, so I came back part time. I haven't worked with them for part time for about four years, and then I was moved up to director Monday. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you, appreciate it, welcome.
You live in Durban?
Actually, I live in Windat.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Well, you should do it with us for a lot longer.
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us. He actually sent me an email introducing, I'm on the board to stand down with you.
Good, and we still got money left in our budget for overtime.
I'll go next, I'll give you some more good news. So for my department, the only thing coming from fund balance is the request for the. For the tuition reimbursement. That's just part of a fringe contractual benefit. I did not pay myself back for that yet, so just consider me one of the good children like, like Lee over there.
No, you deserve to get a payback.
That, that's the only one coming from fund balance sign for my department.
How much is it?
I, so in the contract, it's for ten, but it won't be that much. I don't, I don't even know the exact amount yet, but it'll be less than that.
I don't have any amendments?
I can have a couple of questions.
Sure.
How much did we budget for, if you don't know, if you remember, on how. I believe it was for inspection. Can you give me that number, what we budgeted and where we're at?
For which ones? So we separate them out between our.
Rentals and regular.
Rentals and regulars, okay. So the rental inspections for the year, we've budgeted for four fifty. And then.
It's revenue, correct?
Correct, revenue. And then our regular ones, we have. Four hundred thousand. Not yet. The regular inspections were at sixty percent. We are coming into our busier time of the year, so we've already started picking up quite a bit. And then our rental ones. We budgeted. Four fifty and we're at sixty eight. So we're a little low on that, but if we send out letters, we should be able to pick that up. Right, right now, our revenue overall is over budget. So we're doing pretty well. Our overall revenue for the year is budgeted at two point two. We're at one point three right now, roughly fifty eight, sixty percent.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Uh, any other directors? Ian, you have anything?
Sorry, I just wanted to touch base on two items. One is for major streets. So we're requesting a transfer of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from major to local. The reason for this is because we actually ended up getting more money in Act fifty one that we had anticipated. And we have more in need in local roads than we do in major roads at the moment, so every penny that we can put towards our local roads. We are requesting that budget amendment. So that was one of the ones that is number K, and the items that are the budget amendments. Then we also have the water and sewer, and a lot of these have already been approved by the C W. Sorry, C W S R F and D W S R F grants. You know, projects, so we're just asking to create the general line items and to put budgets in there as we are starting to see expenses in it. I am excited to present to you that we are getting our first large drawdown for D W S R F. So the money should be hitting the bank anytime, but it's two million dollars for our water meter project, and that was for the purchase of all the water meters. So the money is starting to come in with regards to the reimbursements for all of these projects. And you will see the grant amendments. I thought it was on a quarterly basis, so I was preparing to present it. Like in the end of this month, early April, so I know you passed that question in the past. So those are two that are very big budget amendments, that again, it's just a matter of putting it in the budget, because they didn't exist before. And then there's also the two FEMA grants that we have been awarded. They were also not, but the two FEMA grants for the home demolitions that we have been awarded and approved by council. But they were also not in the budget, so again, this is just a request to put the, the money in there with the addition of the ten percent match for each one of those. So one of them was. Three million, five hundred and thirty four thousand, wait.
Three million?
I'm sorry. Where, where is that total? So the eight hundred thousand is. But this is just the matching portion. Okay, sorry. Yes, so the only thing we're asking to increase is for the match, and it's eight hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and fifty five total. So it's three hundred and fifty three thousand, four hundred and thirty for one grant and ninety two thousand for. A second grant and two hundred and ninety five thousand, one twenty, wait, I'm sorry. Your numbers are confusing me. But pretty much, it's about four hundred thousand for one and three hundred and fifty thousand for the second grant, which. Made up of eight hundred and nine thousand. Sorry, she separated it by administrative cost and match, so it confused. Apologize for that. So, so yeah, so those are the home demolition projects, and again, this money is coming out of the water fund, so it does not affect the general fund. So I do hope for approval for all of those, just so that we can start incurring expenses on those grants.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm gonna open it up to the public, we're gonna go to Zoom first. Let's give a second. Is anybody on Zoom that has any questions, has anything to say, is. Bored, seeing none on Zoom, we're gonna move it over to the public. Anyone on the public? Please step up. How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city resides, on the street that you live on, you got two minutes, three minutes.
Mike, I live on Arnold Street, Durban Heights. First comment I wanna make is a hundred thousand dollars in overtime for Highway Department and Billy Maintenance. That was sold two thousand twelve and that was not even attainable back, back then, when the budget was being made, I knew that was not gonna ha- happen. There's no way that, that was going, going to happen, so move on from there. I have talked to few council members in the past. I worked here through four mayors and the three previous mayors up until this administration. Before we could even go out for bids, we had to get authorization from City Council to go out for bids. We had to say what department it is, whether it was budgeted, what line item is coming out. That needs to be done, so you know these things ahead of time, because you authorized. Work to be done, and you may not have been told the whole truth where it's coming out of fund balance. So you need to pass a resolution to have the department heads come before you. To authorize them to go out for bids before they do it. So you can ask all these questions before. The work is done to even write the bid specs, to put them out and do all that work. That needs to be done so that everybody's on the same page and we're not having this conversation. And second of all, I do this at my previous job. And City Council don't ask there. We have the budget broke, broken down into quarters. Every quarter, we present where we are at in the budget. Every quarter to City Council. City Council needs to request every quarter to have a study session, where are we on our budgets? So we don't get to this point in having this meeting that we're having now.
Thank you.
There's just things that need, that needs to be cleaned up.
That's a great idea. Thank you so much. How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city resides, on the street that you live on, you got three minutes.
Good evening, Zahir Alha, three, five, four, Rosemary. I was happy to hear from the chief of the police that they recognized that Act seventy eight exists.
I know, finally.
So finally, Mr. Farah, Rajar will not say it doesn't exist and the mayor doesn't say it doesn't exist. So that was good.
Are you doing a good job today? Let's leave Rajar alone today.
You have to go there, right? It's not approved in the city legally.
Okay, okay.
But it exists, someone.
Sometimes the facts override the law. You cannot live with a woman in the, in, in the state of Michigan is not married to her. It's penalized, it's a felony. But since it is happening everywhere, the law is no, no more followed. So sometimes that happens. The payroll, you need to know the overtime, what's the effect of the, of the overtime on the payroll? On the pension. And since there are contracts and obligations, especially the police and fire, they pick up, I believe, the highest. Years, the highest pay of the last three years or five years. So that will affect their pension, that will affect their benefit. You should pay attention to that. During Mr. Palatko, God rest him in peace, invoices that used to come to the City Council. It says what line item it is, what number, what account. How much they are asking to approve and how much is left in that account. Which I don't see anymore in this administration, which means the City Council doesn't know. If you are overspending on some line items or not. So that should be reviewed and should be. Enforced that every invoice comes in front of you, you know the amount spent and the amount left in that. But in, in that line item. The mayor supposedly by charter should submit to the City Council a financial report every month. On what is the situation of the city financially. He hasn't done it since he took office. That is a violation of the charter, and I think you should call him on it and he should. Submit to your report monthly, so you know where you're at. And other than that, I wish you good luck. Thank you for what you're doing.
Anyone else in here, I need? Anyone on Zoom? Before I go to announcements. Okay, you'll be our final straw.
So I just wanna address the, the information aspect of all of this. I send a budget to actual report to all, all the directors and every member of council every month. Which contains all of this information that, like, we're presenting to you, so everyone has this information available to them. Granted, I definitely should have come to you guys sooner than I did with these amendments, but the. The fact that, like, some departments are over and under budget, like, that information has been given to everyone, every month.
You know, you have to keep in mind a couple of things here, Shannon. First and foremost.
I'm Michelle.
I have to think about that, Shannon, you have to think of mine. You do, you email it to me.
Yes.
You know, my first year or two when I used to read them, I would look at them and I didn't understand what I was reading at first. I used to have to go to David Abdullah and Ray Muscat.
Come see me, I'll show you how to read them.
And what I'm saying is, we need to, as, as a city, and I'm not saying like you're doing intentionally, but we have to, you know, give a breakdown. And I know, I see where you put them in red, and when you start showing us where we're over, or we're out, or, and I, and I'm reading this when you send us through this Excel, right? But you can give us a quick synopsis and a breakdown. Hey, guys, just want you to know, we're over on one, two, three, four, five. Instead of us going through page by page by page, because it's long, hundreds of pages that we're going through, on top of everything else that we're also doing. Council is part time. Right? You can also give us a breakdown and a quick synopsis in an email. This is what we're going to, this is what's happening to the fund balance, this is what's happening to the general fund. You know, I'm still working to get, you know, the, you know, the right information with redacted, all the private information to the treasurer. They know how much this one individual got in overtime, you know, and what they're making hourly, make sure that their salaries are being followed through, because. You're just in my heart believing. There was something wrong with, with bonuses in the light. Like, we have to. Trust issues there, right? There's, there's a trust issue, and it's, I don't call it a. Cultural change, I call it a trust issue. Right now, the fact that we just got money from fund balance, nobody told us about. Never told, you agreed, you said, oh, you guys should have known, but you also didn't tell us. You're just that, as anybody else in this. You should have said, guys, it's coming out of fund balance and we're, you know who used to do it?
So everything that is being requested to come from fund balance either hasn't been paid yet or has been approved by council. Anything that comes through me for approval for payment that's over budget, I reject it and send it back to the director.
Good job, thank you so much. You know, we used to do that, David Saputa, David Saputa used to sit here. Maybe I didn't get along with him as much because of demeanor, but he told us this. Turned over and I looked at the mayor when he used to attend and I said. What are we gonna do about this? He said, we're gonna figure it out. Then we got ARPA money. Everybody started getting, happy, that's the commercial. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Everybody go home and break your fasts.